Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Adjustments to the agenda.
I do not have anything.
Minutes from the prior meeting. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the two meetings that I can -- that I'm making a motion on. The last one, I wasn't here, so.
You want to do that one first, then we'll make the motion for the one that you are here?
Yes.
I'll take that one.
All right. All who's in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I'll make a motion to do the last set of minutes. On Thursday, the 27th?
Twenty-second?
Twenty-seventh?
Seven?
Seven? Yes.
All right. Can you also come with us?
No.
All right. All who's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comments. Keep it to no longer than three minutes, Dan.
Yep. Got three things. You guys can answer any way you'd like. I'd like to know why we're not following the personnel policy. Why it says in there that you got to work for the town for one year before you get certain benefits, and we paid for all of them. Hours of service in the personnel policy says six to 2:30. Like, know why that's not followed? And we'd like to know why town equipment employees and employees are on private property. On town time with town equipment.
Well, as we have done in the past here, if somebody has a issue with anybody that's elected, appointed, or an employee of the town, that is something the select board can take up. Certainly, there's some things that we can't, but some things we certainly can. And any of those things would probably qualify as something that we can take up. But we ask that it be submitted to us in writing, and that we would then go from there with whatever the issue was.
That is the issues that I just read.
Right.
And it's about the policy, so there's nothing about -- it's about how your policy's written and what's not being followed. And you guys are the ones that overlooked that, so what difference does it make if I put it in writing? Am I going to get an answer out of it if it's in writing?
We can answer some things in -- to do with personnel policies and other things we cannot answer. And that's through labor law, and have a little bit of an understanding of, but I don't know it completely. But there's a lot of things that we cannot make public in relation to an employee.
Well, there's a bunch of these that I think are just about the policy.
Well, the policy and what an employee is, you understand that because you have employees that work for you.
So you can't answer these?
If you can give us in writing what the violations are you see and understand, we will all certainly look at that and go forward with that.
I will write it up and have -- I'll give it to Darlene.
Okay. You can give it Darlene, you can give it to any one of us. Anything else?
And where are we at on Taylor Hill? Because, you know, we've been told that no one wanted to make it stretch out long, but we still haven't heard nothing, so are we going for the full 60 days on it?
We're hopefully going to have it done before the 60 days are up and get an answer to you. But it's not, so. That's it? All right. Public comments?
Well, one thing I would like seeing is how Fact TV is here. I noticed that the last time there was a board meeting, they were here, but then they left at the point of an executive session, so I have no idea what might have transpired after that. And would really love to see that be able to pick up and continue after executive sessions end.
Okay. We're not the ones that necessarily control Fact TV.
Yeah, I know that.
If there is additional business is going to be carried on, we may ask them to stay and stuff. And if it's probably not going to be a lot, we may say there's probably not going to be much after the executive session, because we usually have that near the end of the meeting. But it's not necessarily under our control whether they stay or whether they don't. But if there -- if it means they have to wait half an hour, 45 minutes, something like that outside, and we come in?
Yep, I understand that, too.
Any decisions or anything that we've done after Fact TV leaves are in the minutes. All right?
So that sort of leads me to, and I don't know, maybe this is in follow-up or in the same vein of the question Danny just asked. There has not been a decision made as yet on Taylor Hill?
The -- when the decision is made, it'll be mailed out, and it will be to be read to any of the stakeholders in the -- on Taylor Hill.
So that was a yes or no question, and you didn't say yes or no.
When it is -- when it is --
So you're saying no.
When the paperwork is signed, that's when the decision will be made.
Huh, okay.
All right. Tom.
Yeah, well, Danny brought up that point about the hours, six to 2:30. Well, David, if you remember, about five years ago, I brought that same issue up, and it was just brushed aside, and I think you introduced an ordinance to prevent a select board member -- and I think the term you used was you prevent the select board member from laying in wait to watch the employees. So I don't see why it's an issue today if it wasn't an issue about five years ago when I brought it up.
Well, it wasn't an ordinance to --
There was something that you put forward.
We did. We were contacted by the state with a complaint, and they asked us to come up with a policy. We did come up with a policy that said that --
The town policy?
It was a -- it was a policy that we voted on, as I recall.
The town policy?
You remember that, Tom? Personnel policy.
Wait a minute, now, I want to go back and correct this. It wasn't the state. I brought it up because I asked --
No, it was the state that came to us, Dennis.
I'm going to disagree. Let me talk here, because I asked Darlene or everybody, what are our paid holidays for our employees? And Darlene's answer was she wasn't sure. They're in the minutes, somewhere in the back. And I said, "Well, don't you think we should have something written down, like a policy or something?" And that's when we initiated the town policy. That's where -- not the state that made it, I brought that up.
That's correct.
And again, I'm going to go back.
That is absolutely correct, Dennis. But we had a complaint from the state of Vermont.
But then again, like I said, we had the issue of the six to 2:30 hours, about what they were. And that was brushed aside when I brought that up, so I don't see the importance of it today. Right now, that's just one of them. And then after the last month's Taylor Hill hearing, there was a very unpleasant situation that occurred out in the parking lot after the meeting. And I just want to say that, let's see, there's -- it was between a resident and a town employee. And all I want to say is, the town employees are public servants to us. They deserve our respect, they deserve our cooperation. And they don't deserve to be, you know, talked to and screamed at in the parking lot. And if we're going to talk about Taylor Hill later, I'll stop here.
It is not on the agenda that we talked about tonight. We discussed Taylor Hill, it's not.
Well, then I have something to say. We got this thing from Mark Pickering about an evaluation of Taylor Hill.
Yes.
I think this should be made public to everybody in town, because he definitely says Taylor Hill should not be become a town road because of all the liabilities and potential liabilities. Safety of our employees, safety of the -- and he even says, you know, at $3,000 to $5,000 a year, or $215,000 to $350 a year per resident, that's a bargain. So if they can do that, he says, why would the town want it? Because the town would never equal that price. And then the thing is, he recommends getting an engineer. I think that would even give us more reason not to take over the town. And then it spells out what the residents of Taylor Hill should be required to supply, you know, as far as cost and surveying and everything, so. I say, you know, right now, this looks like taking over Taylor Hill is not in the best interests of the majority of taxpayers.
All right. That is -- we have that memo here. Anybody wants to see it? We handed it out at the hearing. Anybody wants to see that, they can get a copy from Darlene.
They have one here.
We need a copy from Jim.
But if anybody needs one, they can get a copy of that.
They don't know that it's existent. How can you get one if you don't know it's there?
Yes.
I have one response to the price that the guy came up with, that Mark came up with. I do most of the pricing for Taylor Hill for maintenance of it, and his prices are very low for what it costs us to take care of that hill as a private citizen. I believe that being a state employee, that he did his evaluation on what he gets prices for, just to plow our hill one time for us, that's not per storm. If the person has to come more than once per storm, it is $175 every time they drop the plow. We get a foot of snow, they come three times. We get 10 storms, that's already just plowing. For a resident to pay, not a town person to pay who gets the sand and everything else much cheaper than we can as a resident, his prices are about a third of what we pay to maintain that hill.
I got it here. This is Mark Pickering. Based on information that I have heard related to residents' own estimated yearly maintenance costs.
He did not talk to one resident on that hill, so I don't know where he's getting --
Then you're calling him a liar.
Yes, I am.
Well, okay. We're not going to go back and forth. Dennis says the floor right down.
It says, "I do not believe that the refusal of the county to take over this road presents an undue burden of maintenance costs to the residents of Taylor Hill."
Okay.
So he heard it from somewhere, and I think I heard it, that it costs them like $240 a year, they all have to chip in to maintain their road. I heard that figure somewhere in one of these hearings.
I don't know.
And that's what he's saying here, and --
All right. You have three minutes to round up, Dennis?
Yep. Okay.
So, Mark Pickering did not speak to any of the 42 residents that were on the hill. We were not even notified that he was coming to view the hill. Matthew can back me up on that, because after we saw him on the hill, I went to Matthew and I said, "Why is there a viewing of this hill when we were told that it would all be done on the 25th?" As far as the $240, Dennis, we pay that per year. It does not cover the maintenance of that hill. That's why each person can afford to pay at this point. It is not covering the entire maintenance of that hill.
What covers it?
Okay. We're not going back and forth, but you still have the floor if you want to.
We don't cover it because we do a lot of the maintenance ourselves for nothing. And the point of us trying to get it a town road in our petition is that all the residents are getting older, and with the age of us getting older, we can't stand in the back of the pickup truck and hand shovel sand out of the truck anymore. That's how we keep the costs down. $240 per resident per year does not cover to maintain that hill.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. We came here a year ago just to ask for a little bit of help. We're all residents of Athens. We all help each other. And Dennis, all lives matter. We -- yes, you got to keep them safe. We got to keep our hill safe, especially when emergency vehicles have to get up there. We have handicapped people up there. We're not asking for a 91 highway to be built. We're just asking for a little bit of help. And that's it.
No, Dennis? Tom? No, no, actually, yeah. Tom?
And also in that letter that he has, it does say, "This is just your recommendation, and it's solely up to the select board." So even though he says all that, and I have an email from him, and it says, "It's totally your choice. You don't have to go by anything on there."
Don? Just want to remember tonight, our beloved May Hopkins cooking, how she died this past Monday. When we had a group of volunteers that were digging out across space beneath the floor here, and when we were painting the outside of the building, she was always the one putting out the big lures for us. She -- when we -- she had an fundraiser idea for a raffle, which everybody had a lot of fun with and was a very successful one. And I know she's been struggling for the last couple of years. Just sad to see her gone, she'll be missed.
Thank you, Don, and I want to just add that she also painted and donated a painting of the meeting house for a raffle benefit to the meeting house a couple of years back.
I have one thing. Russell Brown cleaned the furnace here, and he went to clean the furnace in the school.
Yep.
And he said furnace would probably last -- the boiler would probably last okay through this winter, but next winter, we have to think about fixing it, replacing it.
Did he give us what?
He didn't give us an estimate, no.
What was wrong with it that would have to be fixed?
It's just getting old.
Okay. Lords and officials? Don? Chair?
Yeah, so catching up a bit on meeting house business, there really hasn't been a whole lot to report in the last few months, because we've been working towards and waiting for bids and such to come back in. But thanks to a lot of work that Don has done and continues to do for the committee, we're in a position finally, I think, of being able to start to move forward on the roof truss project that we've been working towards for a while now, and what we wanted to inform the board about. Because I believe if we go back to, I don't remember, it was before all of this COVID stuff happened, I'm pretty sure about that, anyway, that the board approved going ahead with this project. So what we're looking at right now is being able -- we have a couple of bids in. We haven't selected one yet. Don has a hardware bid. There's a couple of other pieces of materials that he's tracking down prices on. But we just wanted to inform the board that we are basically expecting to be able to go forward with this project at no more than $17,000.
And so we've only got one bid on the hardware, making the hardware, or one estimate?
I have several bids on labor. I have two bids on manufacturing, maybe on the steel fabrication. Hardware and lumber, we want to do a little bit more shopping, only have one bid a piece on those. We think the $17,000 is going to be worst-case scenario, where we know we could do that with what we have now. We just want to see if we can get that price down a little bit more, so we didn't want to enter the bids on the record at this point.
When do you think you'll be able to do that for our next meeting?
It would be nice if we could. I mean, we would like to possibly go ahead late fall, if possible, but --
I didn't realize you had permission to proceed with the whole project. I asked the meeting house committee to ask the select board for approval to proceed, and it cost me to exceed $17,000. With that permission, I wanted to engage the little bidder on the fabrication before the end of the morning.
Well, the $17,000 isn't for just the fabrication of the steel, right?
No, it's the whole project. It's fabrication, hardware, lumber, labor, and electricity costs.
What are the prices for the steel work, do you know?
I have one at about $3,600 and another at $4,300.
Who are they?
I guess I could say we -- I guess I could talk about those, because I wanted to go ahead with Vernell Brothers Machine Shop. They were recommended to me, and the other one was the -- they were at the $3,600, and the steel shed in Berniston was at about $4,300.
That's fine. Did they say how long it's going to take them to manufacture those parts? Are they in your timeframe?
I don't -- I don't know how backlogged they are now, but I'll be making that phone call tomorrow. I don't know if they could knock it out in a couple of weeks or if it gets stretched out, and I don't want to get on that. One of the contractors, I believe, that'd be available in November, early December. I have another one in the same price range that wouldn't be able to tackle the job until next April.
Those trusses up there are going to be pretty cold, Dan, in November, beginning of December.
Yeah. So I will make a motion that we go ahead with fabricating the steel for the trusses, and then we can bring in the bids for the work to the next meeting and go from there with awarding who we get for that. Is that reasonable with the two of you?
Well, again, I would say I have to go back and look at the earlier minutes, but I feel -- I believe my recollection is that you already gave us the permission to go ahead with the hardware.
Yeah, I thought we did, but --
And I think approved the project.
Approved the project. We didn't award any bids or anything on it. But this will just certainly say that we can go ahead with fabrication and be sure that we can. That is my view.
I wish you were a little more on the ball. I would have brought the labor bids in tonight.
Why don't you bice our second to that?
I second that.
All who's in favor? So let's get the steel fabricated, and then we'll get going on the bids, review them, and get to the next meeting.
Don, I know that there's only a $300 difference between the two low bids that we have right now. I don't remember which is which, but as Don said, one of them we know may be available to do this earlier, and the other one, we're not sure, but it may be later.
Well, if -- and we don't know how long it's going to take to make the steel either.
Exactly.
If you have the steel made, and you have somebody that has time before the next meeting, we can call a special meeting to review that and award a bid on the installation. Is that --
Yeah, that's fine.
Jimmy? Yeah. So I think we go ahead and get the steel done, and then we'll --
Yeah.
But without the steel, there's no sense in rushing.
Right, you can't do anything until you have the hardware.
Okay. All right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, get the steel made, and then we'll go from there. If somebody's available, then we can have a special meeting to approve that.
So then, the other thing I wanted to just update you on is that we're now looking at submitting an application for another grant from the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation. Their current grant round deadline is October 5th. So we're looking to get that grant application completed and submitted for October 5th.
Is there a -- is there a co-match with it? Is it a matching grant?
Well, it is. It's a 50% match. But what I was going to continue on to say is that what we're hoping to do is to track down other funding, so that this -- what we're probably looking at is a much bigger project, and I shouldn't say much, a bigger project than what would have to be a $40,000 project if we're awarded 20 from the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation. But we will be doing other grant research, so that what we have right now in the fund for the meeting house is $7,500 that was put aside from not this current year, but last year's $10,000 tax allotment for the meeting house specifically for grant match. So we have that part of the match. We'll look to the Wyndham Foundation again. We'll look for other grant sources. Candace is working on that for us. And we'll -- we also -- there's another foundation I know that is interested in helping and supporting us to round it out. But what we're hoping to do is to put together a package that will include window restoration. I was just looking back at the notes from Jonathan Jessup's work four years ago, where he said that all of the windows should be restored within four years, in terms of the need for glazing and repair and such. So that'll be a part of it. Then what we want to do is get painting done on all of the exterior of the windows and the clappards, and there's going to be carpentry work to repair things before that can happen. And then we want to start looking at some interior work as well. So what we're really talking about is, now that we've got the building stable, or we will once this roof trust project is done, we want to make it beautiful again.
So how long would the -- if you wanted the grant from the state, how long would that grant be available to us to?
Well, if it's an October 4th or October 5th deadline, that would be an award that probably would happen in December.
Yeah.
It would be for that year, and I believe, if I remember correctly, you can extend it. I think it might even -- it's at least a year, but I know that you can extend it if you need to.
You think you can extend it for another year?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. And so we'll be looking, as I said, at other grant funding, and there is a foundation that I've already had contact with that is interested in supporting us, and they want to know what we need. So we want to put together a package and see what we need and get back in touch.
All right. I will make a motion that we support the going ahead with the grant application, and that I'd be -- that Sherry or myself be able to sign any of the necessary grant paperwork between meetings.
And okay, so my only question on that would be, is that specific for the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation, or is that going to be something that we need to do for each and every grant as we come up with them?
We should probably -- unless you have some grants in the mix there, I mean, we can make it pretty much anything, but --
And we certainly will inform you as to what we're doing, but --
It'd probably be good just to have, instead of a blanket thing, to have it specific to each grant, a motion that it's, you know, so that we can track it and that we have it down, so each grant. And I don't think anybody here is going to say, "No, you can't apply for a grant." But I think it would be a good idea to have it that each grant that we go for have a, you know, a vote on it from the select board saying that they support that. Because then if, in a year from now, you apply for a grant that isn't -- that wouldn't be supported, "Well, you gave us a blanket grant before. Yeah, but this one, we don't support," or for whatever reason, another board --
I'm trying to understand what reason that might be.
Yeah, I don't understand why. I mean, if they want to apply for our grant, let them apply for our grant.
I would agree with that, but for some of the grants, you have to have a specific motion to do that, and you have to have it signed, and you have to, you know, say when it will be approved and stuff. I think it will be cleaner if we do it with each grant. I don't see any reason why you can't -- we can put in there that we apply for the historic preservation and other grants with this project. Would that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But I just want to be clear, that means do I need to come back and -- I mean, I will inform you for sure, but do I need to come back for permission for each other grant as we find them?
I think this one will -- this motion will be for this project.
Project, okay.
And that you will be able to get the grants. You can sign them, I can sign, whatever they require for this project. So that'd be historic preservation, and then the Wyndham Foundation, whatever you need in this project, you can go for.
Right.
And if there's another project, just come back and go again.
Right, right. We would certainly do that.
Is that reasonable with you?
That is reasonable, but I also think one of the things we do need to know is That is reasonable, but I also think one of the things we do need to know is, are they matching fund grants? And what the percentage is upfront before you accept the grant so that we know.
Right.
But applying for the grant, that should not be a deterrent. You should be able to apply for grants for the project, but not accept them until she talks to us about it so we know what we have to do to receive it, such as matching funds.
The other question is, what project are we talking about? What do you want to call the project?
Window restoration and painting?
Yeah, they call it stage two restoration or something. I don't know. I mean, it's, we don't have a catchy name for it yet, but we're going to try and come up with one because that's part of telling the story and getting people interested in the project and funding it.
Alright, is there a second to that motion that they can apply for the historic preservation and other grants for co-matching for this project, which is estimated to be a $40,000 project?
So, I just wanted to respond to Denise's question. And obviously, there are grants that I know nothing about because I haven't done extensive research. But what I've seen is that you can often use one grant to be a match for the other grant. So, it's not like if we got a grant for 20,000 and a grant for 10,000 and a grant for 30,000, that we now need to come up with 60,000 to match that. A lot of times, that grant can be a match to getting other funds. So, and I certainly, please, trust me, I would not put us in that kind of a position of needing to come up with town funds in a significant amount like that to match. You know, right now, I'm, you know, we've got the 7,500 and I'm going to hope to keep it at that in terms of what we put into it for town funds. But we do have the $5,000 gift that I think you guys all know about that's in the Historic Society account right now, which can also be used as match towards this. But if we're looking at the kind of painting and we want to maybe get some plaster work done, the other thing I didn't mention, we would like to be able to repair the stairs that go up to the second floor landing. On one side, the stairs are really, really in a mess. And you may remember, they've been blocked off for a number of years. So, we want to look at that repair as well. So, it could end up being a sizable project, but we will be looking to prioritize the pieces in it and based on what we are able to realize in funding, start to go at it.
So, I just have a question. You said you have a $5,000 gift in the Historic Preservation. That's not town money, that's historic money.
Right.
Now, is that money able to be used against grants or are you using that for something?
Yes, yes. When we received that last year, and I think I informed the board at the time, that we would be, the intent was to hold that for this kind of next round with the idea of utilizing it for interior work. Because there is some interior work that we want to go after too, but I think right now that it could end up being used for the painting of the clapboards and the carpentry work. But we're going to put it all together in one package that is all around sort of beautifying the building at this point. And yes, that can be a part of it.
Alright, anybody else for boards and officials?
Oh, one thing. I forgot. I just looked over and I saw Matt and I was like, and I want to thank Matt that we are getting ready to move forward on the corner project and clearing that out. The historic marker is on order, should be arriving sometime. I don't know how long it takes to make these. It's going to be delivered to the garage. And I'm sorry, Janice or Darlene, I forgot to bring that paperwork back down, but I made an electronic copy of it. So, I'm going to email that to both you and maybe, Janet, if I may email that to Matt to you, can you make sure Matt gets it? Because that gives you some information about when the sign arrives in terms of shipping. If you, you know, if you see that the packaging is damaged, what you need to do and not accept it and all that kind of stuff. So, I will get that into your hands. And I'm just waiting to hear from Matt as to when we move ahead with clearing the corner.
Okay, alright. Going to warrants and mail. Just as an aside to anybody that's either going to watch this or that's here, if you haven't filled out the census forms or met with one of the census workers, you're still able to do that by going online and completing the census information. And we know that the workers would like that very much if you could appear.
How's the freightliner running?
Looks good.
All the electricals taken care of along there?
Good.
For now. We have a draft from the Agency of Administration referenced COVID reimbursements that we may be able to receive.
So, David?
Yeah.
It says he didn't change the oil filter at the school because the door handle to get in was broken.
It's broken, but you can get in. You just have to push hard on it.
So, did you go back and change?
He hasn't gone back yet, but he will notify me when he's ready.
Okay.
So anyways, there's a possibility that we could receive some money, reference to the COVID, the CARES grant from the federal government to the state government. And I was wondering if the Budget Committee could look that over. We have a few things that...
Do you need it back tonight?
No.
We're going to be meeting Tuesday, so we'll get it Tuesday.
Look at that. I think there is a deadline in there of when we have to apply for it. I'll also give this to the Budget Committee if you want. This is reference to digitizing the land records and records that we have. There are state grants out there for this, to pay for this, and companies can come in and do that. I believe that's just one company that can provide the service. But maybe you can look into it to see about the grants that the state has. I think they have like $20,000 grants, which I think would, from hearing from other towns, I think that would probably cover most of what we have that might be digitized and might be able to have for online.
It would be better for the state to...
It's better for everything to have it. I mean, it is backed up from the state and stuff, but this is a different program.
Yeah.
This is just one company that's offering this, but maybe we could look into that.
I'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Janet, do you recall for school maintenance, do we have something in the budget for the monitoring system, the fire alarm monitoring system?
I think it's all in the telephone, isn't it?
This is a separate monitoring bill.
Monitoring bill.
No, we never did that. We never had that built.
This is 282 that we need to put in there. I'll write a note and put it in my bag for our next meeting, but that's something that was not in there.
It's a yearly, I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've never had that before.
I'll put a note in my bag so that when we need it, I can...
It's in there too. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't just that, I don't think.
There was gravel delivered, but there's no building gravel yet?
Nope, not yet.
Just got it today.
Okay, and what was that for?
Just stockpiling.
We didn't put any bid out for that?
No, only got $2,000 worth this month.
We should probably put that out for bid. Where did we get it from?
Bayton.
Was it that material we used before?
Yep. What did the bill come to this time?
I don't remember.
I just got it in the mail today after we'd already done warrants.
Is that $2,000 gravel trucking? So, we actually got $2,000 worth of gravel or is that fully trucked in?
That's including trucking.
So, we didn't actually get $2,000 worth of gravel?
Yeah, they sell it to us so much yard delivered. It's 15 yard delivered.
$15 a yard delivered?
$15 and something.
Did you ever change that lock up at the school or are you just...
You're going to have a lock snuffed to it.
Okay.
According to the guy down at W&amp;W, I think Bernie, the one that makes the keys, should be better off because they have a, for the locks that the school have, there's a master key they can put in, turn a quarter of a turn and the whole lock assembly comes out. And they put a new one in with new keys.
So, did we ever find all the old keys?
Nope.
Well, I will make a motion that we contact a lot, have Matt... Well, I will make a motion that we, uh, contact a lock, have Matt contact a locksmith and change all the locks, uh, up in the school. The front door and the back door, the end of the side door there.
Okay.
So it'd be three.
Can he key them all the same key, or...
Yes.
Okay, that would make sense.
And that's what we would want done.
And how many keys do we want to have here? Because if they're gonna be do not duplicate keys, then we need to make sure we have enough that we need for whoever needs them.
I have keys, so we think that...
I don't know, I think... Four, five, I don't know, but I do know that there is still stuff in that building that belongs to the Athens School.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, well, actually to the Bracken School, the Athens Bracken School. Contact, I know there's stuff in that school that belongs to them, so...
Why don't we get like six keys? Isn't that reasonable?
Well...
And that'll keep the ones that, if we don't need them all?
That's fine. I just, I don't know if we should give them a key or just have them contact us when they want to get the stuff out.
Well, I would think we would just, uh, have them contact us and we'd give them the key whenever they wanted to.
Yeah, that would be...
That reasonable to you?
Yeah.
So why don't you contact a locksmith, have him change all the locks out, key them alike, and, uh, get six keys made?
Aye.
Is there a second to that?
No second to that.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Was there anything else that you have for us?
Uh, a couple of things, I'm not sure, it must be spectacular.
Charlie, I just wanna say thanks for getting those checks filled out.
You're welcome. It took forever. I mailed them out the eighth, and they somehow ended up opening in just in New Hampshire.
I just got it today.
You just got it today? I mailed them out the eighth.
It might have been yesterday, I didn't know if they mailed yesterday, but yeah.
They, they, we delivered yesterday.
Okay.
But I had contacted the postmaster and we were investigating it, and then they started coming, so...
Okay.
We, we were fearful that they had been lost, the whole bundle had been lost, but... Alright, um, Rose?
Everything's going, holding up pretty well. We're starting in on, uh, fall maintenance on the vehicles, getting ready for winter. Uh, we're gonna cut a couple trees on 35, hopefully next Tuesday. Then we're gonna...
Where are the trees?
Uh, we got this ash tree down here by Stedman's sticking out in the road. It's dropped probably three feet all summer, maybe more. And we gotta do the one by the soldier stone.
And we talked to Land...
I gotta stop to see the people there, for at Stedman's. I talked to Steve about the other one. Alrighty.
The hemlock. The hemlock, it's almost...
Yeah, I haven't talked to him about the hemlock, yeah. And then, uh, let's see, we got a covert to do down on Brookline Road. And we're gonna start on the upper end of Walker Road, cleaning ditches and cutting a bunch of brush up there. So, because they're just about filled up.
And have we come up with a solution for 35 where the gravel washes up onto the new blacktop? That was just the older road, and how you went and get a heavy rain, everything washes up onto?
We put the stone to it last month, and I'm hoping that does it. If not, we'll have to figure out something different.
And when we, back when we had all this heavy rain, it was quite dangerous.
Mm-hmm.
I think if we try and go back to, um, to dig the ditch there, I think you're gonna just hit ledge in most of it, so...
Yeah, there's a lot of ledge up to there.
So do we use, uh, more gravel to, to put out for bids, or how are we gonna...
We only have, we should only have like $2,000 worth left to the gravel budget after this last round.
Mm-hmm.
I would just suggest you stay with Bayzen and then put it out to, for next year's budget, put it out to bids again. We only have to put it out bids if it's, I forget what the number is.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, over 5,000.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand?
I thought it was 10,000 that had to go out to bid.
I think it's 25 if you look at the policy, procurement policy.
Because I was gonna have them deliver a bunch up to, uh,
I believe your policy says 4,500, not 25,000.
I think it's 10,000 for... New construction. 10,000 for new construction.
Is that less for new, people from places from Bayzen and somebody else to make even the lower bids?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
10,000, 2,250.
Procurement of goods and services, including construction, 10,000 to 25,000. Procurement of goods and services, solicit from, well, let me start at the top. Procurement of goods and services under 2,500, sound business practices. Procurement of goods and services, 2,500 to 10,000, solicit three quotes, verbal or written, documents all requesting pricing. Um, procurement of goods and services, including construction, 10,000 to 25,000, solicit three sealed bids. So, if, if it's 2,500 to 10,000, it doesn't need to be a sealed bid, but it doesn't have to be put out to bid. Just as being over 10,000.
Alright. Alright.
He did have, he solicited three quotes though.
Yeah, but that was, we had, we had voted on getting material from them earl- last, I don't remember the date, but, uh, and it was getting that material that has the cement and stuff in it, so...
So that's all still part of that, it's not just plain gravel?
Okay, some of it's to us for the same price.
Okay.
You said in here you met with the L C T about the town garage, what did they tell you?
Oh yes, I went over the list that Tommy started working on when he was there with the, uh, to bring it all up to standards and codes, and we'd be sure we're talking to you over some of the things, where she sent me an email about the hazardous materials and all that, to start working on that, bringing that all up to 21st century.
Um, there is some money from V L C T to help with that, is there not?
Yes, there's a grant he was telling me about. It's a, uh, 50-50 grant. So if we spend, like, the grant's for 2,000, I think we have to spend 1,000, they give us 1,000, but it'll buy a bunch of our safety gear. Uh, like the fire extinguishers, the eye wash might be covered underneath, as he was saying. Uh, fire extinguisher, first aid kits, chaps, anything to do with safety.
What about the, uh, cabinet for...
Yep, the flammable cabinet. And the, his big thing was, uh, a trash bin, a special trash bin for our greasy rags. Wants to keep them separate from the trash. So, that was his...
Does that need to be, it's just a type of trash can?
Yeah.
A metal one, so it doesn't...
Yeah, it's supposed to be all approved, and he sent me the literature on it.
And I know we were talking about in the Budget Committee, um, thinking about cement tanks for the, um, the diesel, right, is that used for the diesel, so that it wouldn't...
If it leaked.
It would be in, in a tank.
I believe the one you bought, Tommy, isn't that double line?
You don't need one, it's a double line tank, you can carry it down.
Yeah.
And it is double lined?
It is double line.
The State of Vermont recognizes a double wall tank.
Oh, beautiful, okay, I thought it was only single line.
No, that's double...
It's a double wall tank.
Okay.
You got it out of the guy from Grafton, right?
No, it's Compton, the guy in Springfield.
Okay.
Beasley.
Yep, Beasley.
Springfield.
Was the grant from V L C T?
Yes, it would be from V L C T. But if we did have the, I mean, if it's not cost prohibitive there for the cement around it, that could only help us if, if it did leak, if something happened. Because I know that they will be on top of us if we have a diesel leak out there.
Well, Amber's supposed to begin prices for us, so we'll have the prices and that and...
We can discuss, uh, the budget, work on the budget.
How, how old is that tank out there? That's fairly new?
I'd say about seven years.
Yeah. Ten to seven years. Give or take a couple decades.
Well, I know they're cracking down on regular oil tanks.
Yep.
And having, those have to be inspected now, and I didn't know the condition or the age of your tank.
It's clearly new. Then the other thing he was, the V L C T brought up, we'll wait to ensure, was, uh, we gotta have a separate pile for sand, because they don't want people just backing up to the sand pile and loading up anymore.
So you need a one for the town and then one for town people?
Well, you just bring up dumble bucket for people. But he, it's, he, the way he was explaining it to me is, like, what most towns do is they just go get a couple old Jersey barriers, stick them together, so the sand doesn't go everywhere, and that is what you dump in. Washburn down there said he'll sell us, uh, cement blocks that are 12 or 13 feet long. They're pretty good height for a hundred bucks a piece.
So what is their reasoning for not having...
Well, it could fall on people.
They don't, yeah, they don't want the pop to fall down on people.
Okay.
Does Grafton have that, a separate one? We have a separate file.
Yeah, but you don't have a gate.
We don't have a gate. Um, so I'll make a motion that we, how many would you need, three?
Three.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we purchase the three. They'll deliver them for that, or we'll pick them up?
I'll have to check with me.
They'll load them anyway.
Yeah, they'll load them one way or the other, so...
Um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, purchase three of them.
Three, what are we purchasing?
How long do you say they were?
Thir- 12 or 13 feet.
That's it?
Yeah, the ones they got down in the back.
You have to place them, so I'll have them place them, because that backhoe you've got won't pick them up.
Well, once I've done, place them there, get a spot, clean out for them.
Yeah, we'll put it over in the corner, or up by the corner of the gate there.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So what are we purchasing, three blocks?
Cement.
Cement.
Cement block for public, uh, sand. Alright, anything else for Rose?
That's all I can think of right now.
Alright. Um, I will make a motion that we go into executive session on a personnel matter and on a legal matter where premature public knowledge would cause the, uh, would cause a substantial disadvantage to the town of Athens. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.